Hello, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, friend.
Sorry, the Greek flag raising went on a little, they started at 10, they were supposed to start quarter off, so sorry for keeping everybody, we'll get right into the meeting. Good morning and welcome to the March 25th Board of Selectment meeting, and as always, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
Flag of the United States of America and
Republic, which stands
And one nation under
With liberty
And justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Great, is there a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen minutes for a special meeting on March 4th, 2021?
So moved.
Okay, who else in favor Fred Camillo's yes?
Jill Oberlander, I second that first, I think, right?
Yeah, all is in favor Fred Camillo's yes?
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Selectmen Special Regular Meeting on March 11th, 2021?
Raven still moved?
Jill Oberlander, I second that.
All those in favor Fred Camillo's yes?
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes for the Board of Selectmen Special Meeting on March 11th, 2021?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Who else in favor Fred Camillo's a yes?
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
And finally, is there a motion to accept the, to approve the minutes for the Special Meeting of the Board of Selectmen on March 15th, 2021?
Lauren Raven, so moved. Fred, you need to second that one.
I will second it, all is in favor Fred Camillo is a yes?
Jill Oberlander abstains.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Thank you. All right, we'll go right into the updates, I'll start out with the COVID numbers. As of March 23rd, there have been 4,331 cases, that's plus 2112 from the week of March 16th. Total active cases is 131, that's plus 26, that's the uptick that we talked about yesterday. Total deaths, unfortunately, we had another one, we now total 87 since the beginning of this pandemic. The one bright spot is the total cases per 100,000 is 18.3, that's down another 2.3, so there's been a steady decline each week, which is good, but some of the other numbers there show us that we really, you know, we're not there yet, so there was, especially with a lot of several of these variants going around. Just as I mentioned, the reason why I was late, we just did the Greek flag raising and it went from just two people last year Karen Fesley Otis and myself with minus a flag, it was at the beginning of the pandemic and now there was lots of Greek Americans out there and we got started a little late, but it was fun, it was great to see everybody out there, very, very proud people and we're very proud of them and certainly the ones that we serve with in government. Here, the Elm Street bump out has started, if you've been in town and you're walking down there, there's also a little bit of construction going on right across the street privately with the bank building, but it's well underway, we're really excited in a couple of months, I think the town's going to be very, very happy what it looks like there and just hopefully the beginning of what we think will be a really nice transformation for Greenwich Avenue. The Rink Committee for Dorothy Hamer Rink is is ready to go, I've asked that they include a voting member this time from both the Byram Vets and the Byram Neighborhood Association, that's been agreed upon, so that's going to be off and running, we're hoping to have a new rink here in town sometime in the next two and a half, three years, so the process starts now, so we're really excited about that, the I-95 Committee, we had our first meeting and we will, we have our, we had our first meeting, but I'm also going to be meeting with DOT, Jim Michael's also going to be there, and we're going to go back and forth and we're going to just update them, the committee, which is comprised of representatives from all different neighborhood groups, Old Greenwich Association, Riverside Association, South Cosco, Millbrook, Byram Neighborhood Association, Tree Conservancy, and of course, our DPW representative in Jim Michael, and we're going to go back forth with ideas and we're going to try and get DOT to actually meet with them at least once a month or close to that, so that's getting going and before I turn it over to Lauren and Jill for their updates, I do want to have a moment of silence for Nancy Brown, and thanks Barbara, the note there, because we, I released a statement the other day about that, she was a pioneer in town, she did an awful lot, she lived here 65 years, and I remember Nancy throughout the years always having, I never had a long conversation with her, but it was always pleasant, short pleasant, and she always had a smile on her face and what a, what a great legacy to live, serving others and doing it with a smile, so with that, if we could have a moment of silence for Nancy Brown. Thank you. Okay, we will go over to select woman Raven, my left there for her updates, good morning Lauren.
Morning Fred, morning Jill, instead of an update today, I'd like to just share some thoughts and make a statement, it's hard not to react to what we're reading and seeing in the news locally in our state and nationally, and we've begun the spring season and have some new reminders of renewal, thanks to the efforts of the POCD Greenscape Committee, we see the crocuses, and for many of us, we're about to enter the most holiest time of year, and as a community, let's take the time to reflect and reset in the way that we speak to one another, what we say about one another, and how we treat one another, let's, let's think, and in terms of thinking, you know, there is an acronym, maybe some people have heard this, but I just wanted to say it again, if we're thinking T stands for truth, before anyone talks about facts and statements, check the accuracy of what is being said, H stands for helpful, does it help either side of the argument or does it just insult, and if it insults, just don't use it, I is for inspiring, not everything needs to inspire action, but we have to remember we're role models, we're role models for our children in the community, and that was a reminder yesterday when I attended the Community Service Awards, N stands for necessary, are they insults or are they constructive, make sure that the thing that anyone is saying is necessary, and the last, my favorite, K stands for kind, so many people disregard other people's feelings, just make sure that what you're saying and doing is kind, and that's my update slash statement.
Thank you, that's, that's very nice, that's something that everybody should remember every day, all of us, so thank you Lauren, and select person Oberlander, good morning Jill.
Morning Fred, good morning Lauren, and Lauren, thank you so much for those remarks and that reminder this morning, it is of course, as a, as a parent, something we think about every day, both in terms of encouraging one's own children to act with, with such thoughtfulness or think, but also as they are, as we are, on the receiving ends of sometimes unkind comments, a reminder of how it all reflects back to us, but I, I wanted to just add to Fred's comments about Nancy Brown, and I actually think Lauren's lead in is really sort of appropriate, actually, when talking about Nancy. She was humble, kind, encouraging, positive, warm and welcoming to a newcomer in town and a, and a new Democrat in truth. Thoughtful and civic minded, and her children and their spouses, one of whom worked for the town, Lane Brown, for many, many years as, as the Assistant to the Controller in the Town Finance Department, and another one who is on the Sustainability Committee, Myra Klockenbrink, illustrate her values every day as well, and I am so fortunate to have known Nancy and be the beneficiary of her kindness, and fortunate to know her daughters-in-laws as well, and to everyone who knew Nancy and her, her values, her humility and her civic service, we, we all benefited, and the town of Greenwich benefited, and we're all so grateful, so thank you Lauren for that lead-in and Fred for the commentary, and I have no particular updates right now as well, other than in that spirit, moving forward with all of our community work, thank you.
Thank you, well, well said, and we, the town is forever grateful to Nancy and her, and her family. Okay, going on to old business, we have Town Administrator Ben Brannion here for a request from the Greenwich Teen Center to co-sponsor an event with the Neighbor, Neighbor to Neighbor ending no later than April 30th, 2021, morning Ben.
Good morning all, I also have joining on our panel is Kyle Silver, the Executive Director for Arch Street, as well as Margaret Goldberg, who's the Executive Director for Neighbor to Neighbor, just very briefly, the Board of Selectmen approved a co-sponsorship, which is called for in the lease at, at your September 24th meeting, that approval was through March 31st, and today we're just seeking an extension to April 30th, 2021, just to make sure we have the right, right approvals through the Board of Selectmen, the Teen Centers would like to, as the memo stated, would like to begin exploring options to resume a resemblance of their operations and programming, and Neighbor to Neighbor is still providing food pantry services while their new facility is being constructed. Also for, we're today seeking the approval for the extension from March 31st to April 30th, and both Kyle, Margaret and myself will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Ben, and thank you Kyle and Margaret for being here today, and certainly to Kyle for helping open up the, and sharing the Teen Center, and for Margaret to, for her continued great work serving the community, it's been a great partnership, we're happy to have helped in any way we can here, and certainly I think this is warranted to, for the extension of a month, I'll see if my colleagues have any questions or comments, Jill?
Good morning, first, thank you Ben, and I first want to start with Kyle and the Arch Street Board, and I, I think I represent, I'm going to guess the views of my colleagues as well as the entire community for thanking you for opening up your facility to help some of our, our neediest residents are opening up the Arch Street and allowing Neighbor to Neighbor to utilize that, I think that has bridged a gap that, that was so critical and essential, I guess my questions really are as to, and this would go to Margaret, if you could just talk a little bit about what the current needs are in the community and how many people you're serving, how the, how the operation is working, and, and then sort of what the plan is post-April 30th, I'm a little concerned that we're not yet out of the woods, I, I did see a headline pass through that our jobless, Connecticut jobless claims are, are going up, and I know COVID numbers are not quite stable, so I am a little concerned about what will happen post-April 30th, I anticipate that I will make an ask to Mr. Silver whether we could extend this special use a little longer while there's some planning goes into, to, to transition, so, but if you could start Margaret with, with what's happening in the community?
Yes, good morning, and thank you so much for this opportunity, I appreciate having this conversation with our select panel here, members of the community, thank you so much, I would also like to expand, expand, extend our greatest thanks and appreciation to the generosity of spirit of Arch Street Teen Center, to Kyle Silver in particular as my colleague, as an Executive Director, and to the Board of Directors at Arch Street Teen Center, it was certainly a lifeline that was provided to us at a very critical time, and we really can't extend enough thanks and appreciation. Jill, I appreciate your questions at the current time, and I have some numbers here, so currently operating out of the Teen Center, working together with TAG, we have a weekly delivery of 460 deliveries to families throughout Greenwich, curbside services are 66 this past week, total, we have 526 families that we provide food assistance to that are in critical need at this time, especially during this very critical time of pandemic. We're currently reaching out to various community partners and entities to see how we can transition as we look forward to the completion of our new facility at Christ Church, as everyone can imagine, any interior space of any particular organization or entity is certainly prime at this point, taking into account space and considerations, their own functions as they start to transition at this time, so nothing has been defined right now for us, quite frankly, but we are continuing our search, a couple of possibilities fell through, the, the scale of facility that we need is larger than what would be a typical office space, right now I'm guestimating out of Arch Street, we have close to 5,000 square feet, and with that upper third floor, we carry an inventory of materials that we provide for various distributions, including children's jackets, person, personal items, detergents, so on and so forth, so you know, it's certainly at a significant scale of operation, and we'll continue to serve as best as we can, so right now we're just seeking that interior space to continue operations.
Thank you Margaret, Ben, I know that there, at least I understand that there's been some discussions, are there any town spaces that could be utilized as that transitional space, I'm guessing, Margaret, with 566 families, how many children do you estimate are impacted by your food deliveries?
So we would say probably at least half of that total, so we're looking at between 200, 300 children that are impacted by this.
We, we have actively been working with Margaret trying to find town facilities, we do have, I'll call it a backup, backup plan, it is certainly not ideal for their operations, but we are looking at some, some contingency plans, but Margaret and myself have communicated probably every other day on, on the subject, trying to connect various resources we know, so right now there's, there is a town facility, about two facilities, that requires mobilization, demobilization of their operations twice, which would, just because of our timing, so it's not ideal at all, I would try to find that one spot where they can go, set up their operation, and then demobilize, and then reassemble out there in new construction, I want that facility.
But without knowing more about the other spaces and also about Arch Street's plans, if, if they were able to stay in Arch Street longer, would that, even a month or so, month or two, would that permit for only one mobilization, demobilization?
I, I think several months would allow that, but I think you have to get to a June date would allow us to have one mobilization, but one of our operating parameters that we had is we're trying to minimize disruption to other programming, so just trying to balance those needs of the town programming, most of our, our facilities that were, that were in play offers summer programming to the residents, so we're trying to make sure that we don't have a, we don't diminish their program offerings.
Right, so you think sometime in June, is that a June 15th or a June 30th?
I'll say yes.
And I, and I guess then, thank you Ben, and thank you for working so steadily on this, you know, 566 families, that's a significant number, and 200 to 300 children, that's a, that's a significant impact, so Mr. Kyle or Mr. Silver, I don't know whether you have already, and I know Arch Street has gone above and beyond to help this community, I, I would ask whether you could consider, you know, I'm fully prepared to vote for the, any extension, but I, but ask whether Arch Street could consider an extension through the middle of June to allow the town to sort of work through any of their mobilization, demobilization issues?
I, I would, I, thanks so much for having us on the call, and I really appreciate all of your time and what you guys all do, because obviously it's a life-changing what you do for so many people, and that's just really incredible, the, what you're doing, and I really appreciate it, my challenge is, is June, honestly, because we have events that have holds on the calendar and confirmations on the calendar, and they are everything from year-end school events to McDowell High School graduation reunion, and as of yesterday, you know, there's three of those events that are major weekend events are planning on having them and still having them, and they have financial, you know, commitments on the line with caterers and so forth, and so if events are canceled, there is some financial responsibility here that someone has to adhere to, and also our space is so incredibly special and unique, you know, to move a high school graduation event or some other school celebration events, you know, it's, there's no other place to move it, just like you're sort of finding with the Neighbor to Neighbor situation, so, you know, and we also have, we need to get into the building to do some TLC, because due to the extension of our commitment to Neighbor to Neighbor, we were not, we did not do that in the fall, like we usually do, we usually take August and get the building completely up to date and ready to go for the school year, so we're behind on that, and we need to do some major HVAC work and renovations, and that, we've been told will take about 45 days to two months, so that's how we kind of got to the original date that we're talking about now, from the prior date, and originally when we, you know, had the prior date in place and, and it, and it worked, it obviously would not be an issue, but at this point, you know, I've got other organizations and students and so forth that, you know, are, you know, biting at the gums to get back into the space and to start programming and, and looking forward to their year-end events.
Thank you for that, and I certainly appreciate the, being, being a parent of teens, the necessity of getting teens, more than you know, the sense of getting teens back to normal, I, I'm just curious about those events, thank you for that explanation, are those private events versus?
No, they're, they're school events, they're like, they're school year-end events and so forth, and like I say, the one event that we have that they're expecting 400 people is a, is a Greenwich High School graduation event in June, so it's, you know, that's, that's the largest event that we've have committed to.
So that's a school sponsor, you mean, the school itself, the school itself is organizing the event?
Greenwich High School's Graduation Committee is, yes.
I see, for, for one of the events, and for the other two?
They're, they're, they're school events, but they're independent schools.
But the school themselves are organizing it, or private parents are organizing it?
The schools themselves.
Okay, so private, so private, the private schools and
And there's also a fundraising event for Reach Prep, which I don't know if you know that organization or not, but they have, they have a June date as well, that they're, they have not fully removed the date yet, but they are considering moving the date, but that is another event that we have on the calendar as well.
So I know that the Greenwich High School graduation is late in June, I know the private schools graduate early, are there, are there events early in June, or are they, I'm just, you know, at this point, we're like looking for days, right?
Right, well, well, the other thing to, the other thing to consider, no, sorry.
Part of my, you know, sort of micro ask on the fly, but you know, every day, every day gained is a, is a day gained, so.
Right, no, absolutely, and well, the other thing to consider too is the fact that the, the building has got to, we, we've got to do some turnaround on the HVAC system, and the, the thing that we're also facing is the, you know, the Greenwich Town Party is using this space, and we weren't sure if that was going to roll out or not, but it is going to roll out in the fall, so there are things that we have to do in order to meet our commitments with other organizations, and I'm flexible to, you know, whatever you guys feel like is needed, but I can't make that decision based on the fact that we have commitments in place, so.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, I, I'm actually, I'm scrolling through the lease actually as we speak, I, I'm just curious as to, so none of these other uses come before the Board of Selectmen? Even though it's a, it's a use of the premises?
Well, these are annual events we've had on our calendars for years.
No, I understand that, I don't necessarily know that, I'm just curious about the consistency with the lease terms, and I think that's something that we should be talking about offline, I guess, Ben, I'm going to put that in your, in your pool of, of, of discussion, right? Because I think it would qualify for the language in the, the Teen Center lease. Right?
Okay.
So, so just, just to go back to that question, Mr. Silver, in terms of the, the dates of the usage, I recognize the HVAC. Is it possible that those dates could be, if you could look at the dates and see whether there's any extension of time for Arch Street, because I think unless, unless there's more contingency backup plans in the work, I would really love to be able to encourage, encourage you to be even more generous than you've been, and give Neighbor to Neighbor as much time as possible to find alternative space.
So the, the date that you would be asking for is June, was what day?
Well, as late in June as you can make it, actually, how about that?
Okay. Okay, and then if there were
And to the extent that, to the extent that the town and Neighbor to Neighbor have not been involved in these discussions, can find alternate space before then, you know, I'm, I'm going to guess that everyone would mobilize as quickly as possible, recognizing that the, the incredible generosity of Arch Street so far, I just think it's
I think the number one question that, that our board sort of, sort of circles back to is what the issue is with going back to the church that the space where they originally held their facility out of, has that been reevaluated or looked at recently?
That's We, we currently serve double the amount of families that we've served in the past, so this just doesn't go back into the box, quite frankly, and the operation, the way that it's set up is uniquely different.
I, I had a thought, and I wanted to again thank both of you Neighbor to Neighbor, Margaret and Arch Street Teen Center, Kyle, I'm sure you've exhausted lots of possibilities, but I'm thinking of churches, I'm thinking specifically in Byram, like Sacred Heart, they have that little school, St. Paul's, the Lutheran Church on Delvin Avenue, they have a little sort of schoolish building, maybe, maybe neither of them are adequate, or maybe you've explored it already, or maybe it's a combination of the two, because they're not that far from one another, it's just a thought I had.
Right, right, and what we're finding is that as these different entities and organizations transitions back now, as this, this gentle lift, interior space is a premium, space issues, everyone realizes that they need their own added space, although it might have been lack of use before, it is a premium now to these organizations, and I think the sensitivity is you don't want to start toppling others and impacting other operations. So that, that's where it gets to be a challenge.
Sure, sure.
Okay, um, thank you, and thank you Margaret, and thank you Kyle and Ben, so do we have a motion on the floor to extend this lease?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we extend the lease at the Greenwich Teen Center to co-sponsor an event with Neighbor to Neighbor ending no later than April 30th, 2021.
And Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion, but I'd like to amend it. So my proposed amendment would be to, to extend the use time to June 30th, with the recognition that they don't, that way they won't have to come back to us if they're able to reach agreement on a later date, and recognition that all parties will be working towards finding Neighbor to Neighbor an alternative space.
Okay, so I
I believe you need to ask the town attorney to weigh in on the most, the amendment to the motion that's on the floor at this point, waiting for a second.
Yes. Good morning, I'm gonna, or Barbara, I didn't see you there, Barbara, so we had, we were, got a second, but also a proposed amendment, so just looking for a little guidance here.
Yes, so the, the question is whether Lauren is going to accept that amendment, or someone can second the amended motion that Jill made.
Thank you, as long, I would second it as long as the language doesn't put, because I heard Kyle loud and clear that they really could be in a bind, so as long as it doesn't box them into some, because I know Margaret doesn't want to do that either, so as long as both parties are okay with that, Kyle, are you okay with that?
Well, I, I think the first thing to do is to sort of, let me talk to the high school and to talk to some of the, because I mean, obviously there's going to be a lot of disappointment here across the board and it's sort of their last chance to ever have any event in the space and still be a teenager. So you can imagine how, how that's not going to deliver so well. I think the first thing to do is to, is to support what's currently there. Obviously we'll try, but I've got to figure this out and it's not something that I can figure out, you know, by myself.
Yeah, no, I certainly understand that. Thank you, Kyle. Yeah, so I, I understand what Jill's trying to do, but I, I certainly, I think we, we, I want to vote on what's before us. And certainly they'll, we'll work behind the scenes to make sure that if there's any possibility to do that, Jill. But right now it puts Kyle on the spot because he hasn't really had a chance to, to circle back with anybody on it.
Yeah, no, my, my intent was not to require it. It was just to eliminate the need to come back to us. If they were able to work out a, an arrangement. Actually, I'm curious and I'm thinking out loud, are events of four hundred people permitted by, by the governor right now?
Not right now.
No, what's the, what's the maximum? Hundred and, hundred fifty, two hundred?
Two hundred outdoors, I believe a hundred indoors right now. That could be going up shortly. Is that correct, Ben?
I'm, I'm not sure exactly what the numbers are right now, but I do believe we're going to see a change very soon.
Yeah, what we're doing right now, Jill, is and everything, all these planned events, we're saying subject to the restrictions or the easing restrictions and where we are at that time. So like we did last year, we said at our meeting yesterday, we're going to start judging these events forty five days out with a hard decision thirty days out, like, just like we did last year. We're pretty confident most of these things will be able to go on, but we're taking it one step at a time. We just don't want to jump too soon.
Right, no, and I recognize like the, you know, again, as a parent, you know, how disappointing it would be to have an event planned and then have it canceled. I do. It's a, it's a balancing of needs in the community and I appreciate the conversation. And I appreciate all of the effort that's going into it. And, and I look forward to further updates on it. It's not intended to be requirement, but I, I do hope that a solution is brought before the Board of Selectmen before the end of April.
Thanks, Phil. So would you, are you withdrawing that or are you?
No, my, my motion's out there. I'm just gonna, someone will second it. That would be great. And if not, I'd like the minutes to reflect that I, I motioned and it wasn't seconded by my colleague.
Is there a second to Jill's motion to amend? Seeing none, the, the minutes will reflect that, that there was no second. And so I would second Lauren's motion.
You know, I already seconded Lauren's motion, so.
You did, okay.
I seconded it and then I asked on that.
Okay, all right. All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes. Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, thanks so much, Barbara and Margaret and Kyle and Ben. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, going on to new business. And we have our friend Deputy Chief Mark Marino here with us for the Central Greenwich Merchant Parking Permit Program.
Yes, good, good morning, everyone, and thanks for the opportunity to meet with you today. So in, I, I guess I'll say this is my most recent effort to try to maybe make a little improvement or a little advancement in the downtown parking situation. You know, we kind of continue to chip away at things here a little bit at a time. But what we're proposing now is really a, a carbon copy, if you will, of what we presented recently with regards to the resident parking permit program for the downtown district. And this is actually targeting or making a availability for permit parking for merchants and employees that work in the downtown area. So it's really an, a, an expansion of the merchant program that we have in place and have had in place for many years. And, you know, most recently, the expansion of the Lafayette Lot Parking Permit Program, which has been very successful. So we're hoping to kind of mirror that and mimic that and bring it to a greater area of the downtown shopping district. So, you know, my proposal calls for permits that would be issued to either merchants, business owners, or their employees. They would be valid for one year. Obviously, we're a quarter of the way into this year. So the permits that we issue this year, if this is approved, would be prorated. The cost of the permits would be seven hundred and twenty dollars plus a five dollar administrative fee. Again, prorated. We're looking to start the project with one hundred permits that would be issued. And again, use the lottery system as we've done in the past. If the demand exceeds the one hundred permits. Thank you, Jenny. Jenny showing the, the map of the area that we are looking to incorporate into this, to this program. Pro, the permits would be valid for the calendar year. They would not be renewable. So everyone that would be interested in applying for a permit could apply each year. They wouldn't be grandfathered in or guaranteed a permit every year. So we kind of open it up so that everyone has an opportunity to get a permit, you know, on a yearly basis. And obviously, requirements for proof of current employment in the area would be a necessity for the, for the program. So that's really kind of it. You know, obviously, one of the objectives is to, again, continue to incentivize, incentivize parkers to use the long-term twelve-hour parking lots and not use the two-hour spaces, the two-hour limit spaces that are on Greenwich Avenue. You know, and try to keep those open for retail and business that's going on, on Greenwich Avenue.
Thank, thank you, Chief. This is, I think, a great proposal. It's something that's been an issue for a long, long time in the Central Business District. And as you said, it's one of the things, options we're looking at to chip away at this problem down there and make it easier for people to shop and dine in our downtown area. Hundred spaces is a big deal. It's a big deal. And I, I'm aware of what you've been doing. We've been talking. So I don't have any questions except for just one that I was thinking about. Do we have any idea of how many employees are on the avenue at any given time? Whether it's a second floor or retail and restaurants?
No, I really don't, but I, I see Katie is on the, on the call. I, I don't know and I want to put her on the spot, but I'm wondering if she might have a ballpark number or ideas to what that might be.
Katie, you'll need to unmute.
Hi, good morning, everybody. I'm on a different computer today, so sorry, I don't have my background. Yes, hi, everybody. I'll, I'll look, I'm grabbing that right now. We actually did a project a few years ago with some interns and they went up and down Greenwich Avenue, spoke with all the employees, asked them what they thought about this system. So I, I have that number if you want to just keep talking and then I'll raise my hands when I have it for you.
Okay, thanks, Katie. It doesn't change anything. It's just something that I was curious about. But it's, I think this is really a, a great step forward.
I just have one question because in the cover sheet, it talks about applicants will be required to provide two proofs of employment. But then on the actual application, it doesn't seem to indicate two, because I was curious as, you know, the two versus one.
With the application, there's a, a, another sheet that covers the, the rules and regulations, if you will.
Okay.
And really, acceptable proofs of employment would be a current piece of notarized letter from your employer on company letterhead. And obviously, they must be current within the last thirty days.
So you're saying either or, but do they have to provide both? Because what would be two proof, two forms of proof? Do they, that's what, this just was confusing to me.
If I could interject for a moment, Ms. Raven, in the proposal, there was just like, I guess, a word missing, provide one of two proofs.
Oh, okay, great, thank you.
And you had two options, sorry.
Thanks, that makes sense.
Thank you, Luanne. Constantly, constantly bails me out or makes me look.
Katie, you said you, you have the number?
Yes, it's two thousand four hundred and forty-three total number of employees. Eighteen hundred of them drove, so it was about seventeen hundred cars that they had, that they had counted. Four hundred and ninety-three were the number of those that used private parking and twelve hundred were those who used public parking. And if, if I might just take a moment, Lauren, at the Reimagine Meeting yesterday, we talked briefly again about, and then Deputy Chief, we talked about this the other day, about interns that we have that are going to start to help kind of bridge the gap between what the availability is versus, you know, trying to encourage people to, to use, to use this. Obviously, it won't work if they don't use it. And also considering a pilot project, maybe using the town hall parking lot during the summer, which, you know, it's, it's not as fun if you've got to walk that distance. But I think with the data that we have from this previous project that the interns had done, this was in two thousand and sixteen. And now being able to actually get this off the ground, I mean, kudos, kudos to you for, for doing this. I think this is terrific and I know it's had a lot of positive response. So I think trying to, this, the, these interns this time around will be able to try to bridge that gap and be helpful in that way.
Thanks so much. That's very helpful, Katie. Thank you. Jill, you had your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Deputy Chief Marino, and thank you, Luanne, both for your persistence and tenacity at proposing improvements to our parking program. It seems that we get a new improvement every couple of months. I would encourage you to do essentially a year-end report of sorts to summarize all of the changes. Because I think for, for people that don't follow our monthly meetings, it will be really useful to, for them to see a consolidation of all of your proposals to understand how much work is going on at our Parking Services Department. I just wanted to also clarify that it seems that these are the same lots, right? That are being used for, for the additional resident parking as well? Am I correct?
Yes, that is correct. There's ten, ten parking, ten twelve-hour parking lots that have been, you know, are part of this, that will be part of this program. You know, same lots that are part of the resident parking program, which currently, as of last week, I think we had twelve applicants for that program. I really think that this pro, and we're going to continue to accept applications from residents until we get to that hundred mark, if, you know, if the demand is there. And if not, then that's great, but you know, the option is there for them. The, I, I really think that this, this program for merchants and employees will be, you know, much more robust and much more, you know, people will really look at it as a, as a great incentive to allow another parking option.
Yeah, no, I, I think so. And if you could just remind me the total number of spots in those ten, twelve-hour lots as well as how many potential permits, including this resident program, excuse me, this merchant program, the prior merchant program, as well as the resident, I think, what is it, three hundred? Hundred for each merchant program and one hundred for the residents? Is that, am I remembering correctly or?
The, the resident program, we were going to, we're going to cap that at one hundred. We're not near, nowhere's near that number right now. This program I'm proposing capping at a one hundred. The Lafayette Lot, which is the only other lot that's in this general vicinity, is capped at twenty permits per year.
Twenty, all right, so two twenty. And the total capacity of the twelve-hour lots, do you know offhand?
I, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I can certainly get them to you.
Yeah, and one of the, I think, from what we've heard generally from property owners around Greenwich Avenue, although not specifically on this program, is that they want the employees to move off of the avenue out of the two-hour spots and into longer-term parking. I know this is a first read of the program, so I would ask the media if they're going to write about this, that they encourage any retailers and property owners to reach out and let us know their thoughts, whether they're in favor or against. But also I would encourage Parking Services to periodically evaluate with the property owners and perhaps even making some of the two-hour spaces longer spaces for people that are coming to dine or to shop, maybe three hours before they have to move their car. I don't know whether you've ever considered that. That might bridge the short term and, you know, maybe more medium-term parking as well. So something to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Jill. Okay, no, actually, we're looking for a vote on this today, correct, Chief?
Totally your prerogative. I mean, you know, I would, I would like to start the process, get the applications. We are, you know, we're rapidly approaching April. I know the outdoor dining season is going to be starting soon. And, you know, so to, again, to continue to work to free up the available parking spaces on Greenwich Avenue. You know, I would like to, this, obviously, the program's going to take a while from start to finish to get the permits issued. There'll be an application period and then applications will have to be vetted and so forth. And, you know, if the demand exceeds one hundred, then we'll use the lottery system as well.
Thank you, yeah. I, I see no reason to delay it, especially right now with warm weather here and people are out there now dining. I don't see.
Yeah, Fred, I, I, I generally, I would generally agree with you, but I do think unless, I, I would like to give the public opportunity to weigh in as well. And by, by doing, you know, by not following the process of, of the first and second reads on something like this, we, we take a vote in a non-emergency situation because we're really changing what's present practice. It's not an emergency to change it, although it would be beneficial from our opinion. I think it's prudent to wait and get input from the community on it if they choose to provide input.
Yeah, you know, normally I would agree with you, Jill, but this is something that we keep hearing all the time, that we want parking freed up. And, and the, you know, having the employees see the meters has been an issue for a long time. So I don't, I don't see any opposition at all with this. I mean, this is something that I think would be one of those one-hundred percenters where people are not going to, I should never say that, maybe ninety-five, five. But I don't, I really don't see the reason, I, I don't think anybody's going to complain that we're actually freeing up parking on the avenue.
Well, I, I don't anticipate it, but we do have a process for first and second reads. It is really only two weeks. I believe one is our next meeting. So given that this is, has gone on for a long time, I don't see the harm of giving it the two-week, follow-the-process read and allow people to have a different point of view to have the opportunity to speak out.
Yeah, I know, I, I appreciate that, but again, I just heard the chief say it would be better from his perspective to get this going. I know that it's warm weather out there now and, you know, why wait another two weeks when this is something that, you know, we, people have been asking for, talking about for years. But just, Barbara, if you could, since this is the first time, it's a first read, could we make a motion to do away with the first read here if I make that motion?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Actually have that codified?
My video, can you hear me?
Yes, okay.
Okay, I mean, you certainly could take that, make that motion. You know, if, if that is the way you normally do things, I would say to continue with the process. So if you.
Yeah.
Longer want to continue that process, then that should be a change that's voted on.
Okay, and Lauren, you were. Okay, and Lauren, you were gonna, thank you, Barbara.
I was just gonna say, is the first, second read, is that even codified? It's, it's what we do in practice, but I don't know that it's.
It's not codified to do so, that is an option that you have.
Yeah, thank you. Out of respect, I think I would just make a motion that we waive it since we've been doing it. Because again, people are asking for this all the time. I, I don't see the downside to this one. If it was controversial or even somewhat controversial, I would say absolutely, I would back Jill up on that.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's just, if it's not, if it's not something that's codified or required, I, I just think it's important to make clear on the record why you're not putting it in place for this particular issue, that's all.
Yeah, thank you, and this way Jill is on record there, so she, you know, that would be recorded, so.
If it helps, you know, we've been talking about this in reimagine for probably at least two to three meetings, and there are retail business folks that have participated as well as landlords, and nobody's objected to it. Just that helps.
For me, this is an issue of public transparency and opportunity for comment. This is not an emergency situation, it is not an unprecedented situation. Yes, I agree that we've been talking about it for a long time, and I agree that for the most part, at, at the comments we've heard from retailers have generally been supportive of it. I don't, I don't know whether we'll get any objection, maybe we'll get none and we'll only get positive. But I, I think that our process has been to do a first and second read. I don't think the public really tunes in to this, these kinds of discussions until we have it at the Board of Selectmen and the press writes about it, actually. I'm not, we do have some stalwart viewers, and I thank them for coming on every, every two weeks. But a lot of the public really only hears about things when it's written about in the media. And given the fact that it's not sort of COVID and unprecedented, where we took action immediately, we should give the public the opportunity to comment. So if we do move forward, I will vote against taking it up right now. It's not that I'm opposed to the program at all, I just want to give the public transparency. And our minutes, by the way, do not reflect a lot of our discussions, and they just reflects our votes. Case in point is, was the discussion over the waste management referral.
Alright Jill, let's please, let's, can we stick to this subject right now? Because what you're doing now is you're unnecessarily bringing in other things that is going to create arguments here that we really don't need.
You're cutting me off, I have a speaking.
I'm not cutting you, I'm just trying to, to focus you.
You are cutting me off, and I am very focused, and I'm responding to your comment that said that the minutes will reflect our conversation. Actually do not reflect our conversations, they reflect our votes. So if we would like to change our practice, I have not modified our minute, minutes to reflect our conversations. But if we would like to
Thank you.
our minutes to reflect our conversations, then, then I, I asked Barbara when drafting the minutes to reflect our conversations, and I will have a motion to revisit prior minutes to reflect our conversations as well.
You don't, the Roberts Rules does not say you have to reflect the conversations, it's with the business you take up. What I said was that I would like them to reflect the fact that you did, you wanted this on the record as far as your vote goes, that you don't like what we're doing, like you don't like the, we did previous to this. So I want that reflected, that you had an objection to it, had nothing about the whole conversation. So, and, and you, you don't have to do that in minutes, I have a copy of the rules here, you don't have.
I understand what the rules are, Fred, however.
So let's make a motion.
We're having a conversation about, fine, I will make a motion that our minutes include a reference, our minutes for this meeting include a reference to providing for transparency to the public and the opportunity for the public to weigh in on this proposal before we vote.
Okay, absolutely, and I, well, I make a motion that, was there a motion out there that we waive the second reading, which is not even codified, that what we normally do, so that we can actually start freeing up parking spaces that people have been asking for for decades? So is there a motion that we waive the first read rule?
So moved.
One question first. Excuse me, excuse me, Fred made the motion to waive the second read, so we need a second to that motion.
I, I did, I so moved, Barbara.
Yeah, Barbara, I believe I had a motion to have the minutes reflect. I believe we had a motion on the floor, technically by Roberts Rules, that we would need to dispose of that motion first. Is, and we can replay the tape, if I didn't explicitly make the motion, then that's fine. But I believe I just made a motion to have the minutes reflect the discussion about transparency.
That's been duly noted, but we did have a motion that needed a second prior to your motion.
So I would second, I would second the motion, we'll visit that in a second, I'll second the motion. All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander is a no.
Lauren Raven, yes.
So that passes two to one, we will take it up, and then Jill, your motion?
My motion is to have the minutes reflect the discussion about why I did not want to take this up as a first read.
I'll second that. All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes?
Yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so I would, now, let's, there's no more discussion or questions or thoughts or concerns? Is there a motion to approve this?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the Central Greenwich Merchant Merchant Parking Permit Program.
I will second that. All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes?
Jill Oberlander is a no for the reasons stated before, not because I'm opposed to the program.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, it passes two to one, okay, thank you very much, Chief, Barbara and Luanne, much appreciated for bringing this much-needed program to us, and I think we're gonna really chip away at this, this issue down there. So we can't thank you enough for the work you're doing there, thank you.
Hey, thank you to everyone on the board, and also to Katie and Luanne for helping out, thank you very much. Have a good day, everyone.
Thanks, Chief.
You too.
And thanks, Katie, for that, for the statistics there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, alright, so we have one more item. It's proposed ordinance to create a Greenwich Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And we have our PNC Chair, Margarita Albin, and our Town Planner, Katie DeLuca. Good morning, Margarita and Katie, good to see you. I think you're, you're both muted.
We're coming. Hello, people.
Margarita, I saw you before with your dogs, welcome this morning.
Oh, did you, and you didn't stop and say hello?
I was running to the Greek flag raiser, I didn't want to be late, but I did wave.
So we have Amina here with us as well, and I believe Sam Romeo has joined in the attendees. I think it's basically as support for the concepts that we're raising with you. Could the host give us green share? And I apologize, I'm on my personal ID, because just in case we ran late.
No problem, thank you.
And I switched iPad, I switched computers, so I got my proper background on.
I sent you a background right away, I'm like, Katie, you have to have, but you don't.
That's like the wizard behind the curtain, right?
I still don't have screen share, I can wing it.
No, you have it now, we just had to switch some things. You should be good now.
Okay, there you go, okay.
Thanks, Jenny.
Yeah, you had to make, I don't know what this is. Alright, hold on, trying to send Katie a background.
No, no, I'm, I'm set.
Are you seeing my screen?
Yes.
Okay, now tell me something, how do I make it big, you guys?
It's big enough, it's big enough.
But are you looking at my dogs as well?
No, you're full screen.
That's good, that's always what people tease me about, they tease us about two things. One is having that big Greenwich background behind us at every meeting. It's like Greenwich has joined the meeting now. Okay, so today we're here to talk to you about creating an Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the town. This idea was first proposed to the RTM in nineteen eighty-eight by William Modelys, who was then Town Council. The RTM tabled it, and a year later, the eight-thirty G Affordable Housing Statute was approved. And since then, the town has not yet met the ten percent state affordable housing goal that is in that statute. And so the first reason we give you for why a trust fund is that the town has not yet met that goal. The second one is that land price is the largest challenge that the town encounters as it tries to do affordable housing, particularly as we want to do projects that are in scale with our as-built architecture. We believe that financial support can facilitate the development or purchase of additional affordable units, renovation of existing affordable units, and potentially enhancing affordability of existing units. It, just so you know, I was speaking with Westport about our trust yesterday, and they mentioned that when they, that when they did their moratorium on eight-thirty G, they counted redeveloped units, that's one of the things their housing authority had counted. They had thirty-five units that they redeveloped that gave them points towards an eight-thirty G moratorium. So we believe that a fund can facilitate development consistent with Greenwich land use patterns. And there's a benefit to the fund, which is that by state law, what are called government-assisted units will count towards our ten percent affordability requirement. So as soon as we have a fund, by default, even if it's not a full thirty percent eight-thirty G set aside, it will count to the requirement. The next piece of good news is that there is no cost to the town. We're writing this trust to start being funded by private donations and grants. However, as a spoiler alert, we will consider in the future some sort of development fee. That's what several towns in the state are doing. New Canaan, who has one of the earliest trust funds, has a development fee, builders pay X. I believe it's, I think it's ten dollars per thousand or something like that, I have to look it up. And it goes into the fund, New Canaan is using their fund. And I spoke with them last night in prep for this, and they feel that it has been very successful for them. Our trust will have a seven-member, would have, as is being proposed, a seven-member Board of Trustees. Two would be appointed by you and the RTM, and would be members of the public with experience in affordable housing, a knowledge of the market, et cetera, so that they add to the depth and knowledge of the group. Two members would be from the BET, because these are primarily going to be spending and expenditure financing decisions. One would be the majority and the other would be the minority leader, I believe that's the correct terminology, Jill, I'm never sure. Then Katie, the Planning Director, Demetria, as the Human Services Director, and one member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Town Finance Department, the Controller, would be the fiduciary custodian. We think this is super important. It has to be, you have to have very strong internal controls when you're managing what could become a significant amount of money. All board meetings, of course, would be noticed to the public, minutes posted. This town must file next June an affordable housing plan with the state. All expenditures approved by the trust would be consistent with that housing plan. We would require a supermajority of five votes for the board to approve projects. An annual report would be issued on all activities. And Katie and I noticed that not everybody has conflict of interest and ethics clauses in their trust funds in the state, and we felt that this was very, very important. And we've already drafted one in our trust. As, as a safety measure, just to assure you, the, the Planning Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission would still have approval of projects that go before the trust. So it isn't like you automatically approve it and go out and build it, you still need to come to P and Z and get approval. So that's your cheat sheet on what's in the trust. We have a draft we circulated to you, it's gonna have a whole bunch of changes still, but we wanted to get the ideas out to you. And I'm hoping you've got some questions on that. And I'll bring it back up if you want to look at it again, but for now, I'll stop the share so we can see each other. Amina has been fabulous. We are, oh, I forgot to say, we're already working with the RTM on this. The Legislative and Rules Committee Chair and the Land Use Committee Chair are with us on this and giving us advice and helping us draft it. We hope to go to them with a first read in June. You know, I would be overjoyed if they would approve something on first read, but I know that people may not like that. You guys were not even asking, we will come back to you. The Planning and Zoning Commission has to approve the language first, we believe, so we would get planning and zoning, then we would go to you, and then we would go to the RTM. So the earliest we anticipate approval would be September, because as you know, the RTM does not meet in July and August. Unlike certain other groups of people that are before me now that continue to work. Okay, so with that, do you guys have any questions?
Sure, thanks so much, Margarita. Just the, the makeup of it, the seven members with five requiring, you know, requiring five votes for approval. The two that are appointed by the BOS and the RTM, so that's just one and one, correct? Or do they both have to agree on the two people? Is, in other words, are we sending somebody and the RTM sends somebody, or are we both agreeing on the two?
No, no, you would be, it would be like you do all the commissions and stuff. So you guys would nominate two people, the RTM would approve them, and we would put it, you know how they, they have that big schedule that, that Lauren has to keep an eye out of when their terms expire? So we would have them have the non-overlapping terms, you know, that all that's, language has to be put into the trust. I haven't done that yet, but I realized after, I have to put that in for the people that you nominate through your term. You know, person A, slot A, you know how that thing all works. I'll copy that language, I gotta find it in the charter. But yeah, so that would work like that. What else, Jill had a question? You're muted, muted?
You're muted.
Thank you, I have a couple of questions. But on to that point, the designees, the chair designees from the BET as well as planning and zoning, I think those are, it's applicable. So I don't think Roberts Rules actually technically limits designees to be members for, for, for something like this, to be members of that particular board. Is it your intent that, hypothetically, the BET chair designee and minority caucus leader designee would be a member of the BET?
Absolutely, and that's the wording, I thought I did that, I'm, I'm in, I'll ask Amina to make sure. We think it's essential for the BET to be, to be involved in this because you're spending money.
Well, I'll just give you an example, so when the Nathaniel Witherell Special Planning Committee, when I was on the BET, we had some non-BET members on the committee. So I, I don't know, I'd have to go back, or you could go back, Amina, or maybe you already have looked at the Roberts Rules, when it's not a special committee already stopped, it's not a special committee of the BET, can their designee be a member of the public at large? Or does it have to be a designee of that particular board? It, to clarify it.
I would, we'll spell it out, Jill, I think we should spell it out. I would not want to have this leave BET or P and Z control, I wouldn't want either one. Because we're getting two members of the public anyway?
Yeah, I, I just wasn't clear from the language what was intended, so that was one of my questions.
Okay, so I'm gonna make sure I do that right, okay?
Yes, and we can certainly make it very clear, and as Margarita said, the intent is that these two members be from the BET and not elsewhere, so we can certainly tighten up that language.
Because my concern is, my, my concern is that we have heavy control on this so that we don't have to have people second-guessing the decisions. In other words, the, the controls are implicit, so you don't need to be going around asking for approval every time you do something because people trust the structure.
Right, right, I have a couple of other questions, I can either.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, or.
Go, 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 go.
Whatever, whatever makes you comfortable. Some is, one of them is specific to your investment, investment of proceeds. It, there's no restriction, it just says investment into the types of investments the town is. The town has specific ratios of what they can invest in. I would, I, I'm not sure whether the intent was to limit the investment, let's say twenty-five percent to, you know, bond, bonded instruments, not high-risk. Is the intent to follow the investment ratios that otherwise govern other town investments? Or is it just to provide the capacity to invest similarly? I would just ask that you clarify that.
Okay, I'm sorry, you went too fast. So the intent is that we trust the town to make the decision on what's appropriate? And if you think there should be more specific language that keeps the money safe, then we should add it in? then we should add it in.
I think there's a point of discussion there. I think you should have, one should have that discussion, perhaps with the.
With Peter Minarsky?
With Peter Minarsky, but also with the, you know, you're working with a subgroup on, on the affordable housing, you know, in terms of the growth of the, the principal there, what, what's anticipated, what's considered safe, what, what are other communities doing? I would have the conversation on, are there any limitations on the, the ratio of investments within the portfolio?
I think it has.
Does it need to be codified, or is that just something, a policy that could be adopted or?
Well, I don't need to tell you. I modeled this on other Greenwich. I, I stole everybody's language, you know, I'm, I'm a thief. And nobody's addressed this in their, in their, I mean, you'll laugh, the New Canaan Trust. Amina loves the New Canaan Trust. It says, we're gonna have a trust, and this is how we're gonna fund it, and that's all it says. It's two sentences. It's hysterical. But, and, but if, if, whatever, we'll talk to, tell us who to talk to, and we'll put in some language, because I think it's essential that the principal be as protected, if I might, as a pension plan. But the other thing is it has to stay liquid. It has to be highly liquid. Because as soon as you have enough money, you begin dispersing it on a regular basis. Because even if you can't fund a big project, like a two million dollar, three million dollar project, you would hand it over to the housing authority for a rehab of units somewhere. So, or a purchase, you would give it to the housing authority and they would buy a condo somewhere. So you want, as soon as you have money, you want high liquidity, and maybe that's what we need to say, high liquid, high liquid money market securities.
Or you might wanna include an investment policy as a sub.
Okay.
Included in this separate provision, but in, in, in one of the other plans, that there would be an investment policy that's vetted by maybe the BET or the.
My finance dudes are gonna love that, and they'll come up with something. You know, we got Bill Finger and Ken and Bob Barilak. They'll love writing something like that. But I think it's just gotta be highly liquid. Something that if the housing authority comes in and says, hey, we can rehab a unit, it's just become vacant, we can hand them fifty thousand dollars, that kinda thing.
And, and that leads to my next question, which is that this, this legislation doesn't limit the, the grantees or the beneficiaries of the trust fund to the housing authority.
No, it does not.
It could be any low-income housing developer, whether it be private or another municipality coming in and developing.
Absolutely. And one of the goals in this is that it will help us, it will help us with our inclusionary zoning, because we could up the percent of inclusionary that we mandate if we can assist builders. But when the trust board decides how to allocate money, it's gotta be totally consistent with what's been filed to the state. So if we, if the town of Greenwich has said to the state, our first priority is the housing authority, that's who gets first dibs. So, because we have to file under statute eight thirty J, June of next year, we have to file the affordable housing plan. So we, we will adhere to that. Kind of put a lot of controls on this.
Right.
So that's the idea. So not housing authority, absolutely, private developers, absolutely. But also, we wouldn't spend a dime until that affordable housing plan is filed, and then it has to be consistent. But of course, you know, the housing authority is gonna help us write the plan, so, you know, they'll look out. Right, Sam, you'll look out after yourself. Lauren?
So.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Jill, you had another question. I'm sorry.
I do have another question, but I'll come back after Lauren, but I wanna ask about that. The, so the plan that you're talking about in this legis, proposed legislation is the plan that you anticipate filing next year, and that's a plan that only gets filed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. It does not go to the RTM. Is that correct?
It requires, I believe, well, we, we can, we'll happily take it to the RTM if people want us to, you know, we don't mind. But we only have to, I think it's only the Planning and Zoning Commission that has to file it, but since the town has to live with it, I think we should all talk about it. I think it should be a dialogue. It's always good to have a dialogue.
And, and I do have another question, but I'm happy to go.
I'm happy to go after Lauren. I love this. I love having questions.
So first, a thank you, because I know how much time and effort that the subcommittee has put into getting to this place. Two things, I think I heard when you were sharing your screen, that developers can get approval from the fund before coming to planning and zoning to get approval for development. So in no way would that influence your, I, I think, it just seemed a little cart before the horse in a way.
It can't, see, we talked about this a lot, I know. But you also can't apply to the Planning and Zoning Commission if you can't do the project, cause it doesn't, as they call it, pencil. So they have to know that it's economically viable before they do plans and submit to us. So we debated this with Katie, and where we came out is, the trust says, yeah, if you get approval, we would fund it.
Okay, got it.
And they set aside the money, but you don't want someone to spend a hundred thousand dollars. Say the housing authority wants to redo Corey Knoll. You don't want them to spend money and go to the, go to, and go to planning and zoning, and then have them find out that the trust isn't interested in, you know, not, it can't help them.
Got it. And for the housing authority. Clarify that, you know, as you continue to.
Yeah, it's in the language. That's how we wrote the language for that reason, but we debated it internally a lot.
The other thing I wanted to clarify, because Jill, you made a statement, it's intended, you know, priority, housing authority, and then developers, but you also said other municipalities coming into development. I don't think that we intend to fund other municipalities coming in to develop in ours.
But.
Muted again.
Was, um, I, I might have.
You're good, you're good.
What I was referring to is other, you know, other types. My understanding is that there, and there have been some discussion, I guess, in some of these other state legislations about more regional affordable housing development programs or proposals.
Yes.
Other housing authority type developers that may not be Greenwich communities that would be, not the city of Stanford has been coming in and getting money from us to build affordable housing, but I believe that there is a Stanford, a similar, a similar.
Stanford, Stanford has a housing authority, and to Jill's point, the proposed legislation, I'm blanking on the bill number right now, extends the jurisdiction of housing authorities fifty, oh, across their borders. So Stanford could actually build affordable housing in Greenwich, or Greenwich communities could build affordable housing in Stanford, which is kind of an interesting idea. I don't know, Sam, how you feel about that. You didn't testify on that one. But so, I, I don't, let's see what happens with the bills. We won't have this approved yet. And my guess is whoever comes before us gotta be consistent with what we filed in this affordable housing plan, and we won't have a lack of high priority applicants. That's my guess, including, you know, we're dying to redo Corey Knoll. Right, Sam?
Um, Lauren, if you're, if you're done here.
I am, thank you.
Right.
On, on that, what a, what a nonprofit, let's say, for example, Ableist, who may buy and develop housing for their, if they agree to deed restrict, would they also be qualified? If, assuming that however your, how, your plan runs out. So some, a nonprofit could also be a qualified recipient.
Yeah, and one of the problems here that we need, that, that troubles me is the state is entirely focused on affordability. But Sam, on the other hand, has done disability accommodate, accommodation in, in the process of that. And at some point, when we file with the state, I think we have to raise the issue. There's two issues on which the state just doesn't focus when they talk affordability. They're not focusing on disability, and they're not focusing on elderly or senior citizens. And I don't, you know, this, every time I've raised those issues, I get sidestepped, and they're essential. So if Ableist came in and it was, again, consistent with what we filed with the state and the priorities Greenwich has filed with the state, we would fund it. I would want us to see funding for disabilities.
And, and to that end, I just had a question about your definition. On affordable definitions, affordable rental and home ownership units, eighty percent of the median family income, and I'm sorry, I didn't look up to see what.
Don't worry.
Is that the, is that a change, or is that the existing definition?
So that's, I'm gonna just, Amina has said that to me. I, that is mostly the wording of the state statute, and Amina has pointed out to me that I need to do the exact wording of the state statute, and we will do that. However, since the last time we talked to Amina, we're thinking of adding the moderate income housing bar town salary people as well. That would be really good, because as you know, sixty percent of town employees still live outside of town. So we would like to have a second category, and I've gotta figure out with Amina how we would word that. But right now, the eighty percent is the, is the ceiling at the state level for affordability. And, and, and I, their word, their wording isn't quite, I don't have the wording quite exactly right, but it's basically the state wording, the state definition of affordability.
And I would just ask that, to the extent any of your definitions change the status quo, that you highlight that for those of us who are novices to this subject area, so that.
Can't, we can't change the status quo. We're gonna go with what's the law, cause that's what we, that's what we're doing. We're doing the law.
Yeah, I didn't know you were able, in establishing this trust fund, you know, uh, target certain types of developments as opposed to others, and, you know, not being as facile with the law as you and Katie or Amina.
That's Katie and me, we're facile.
Right. By the way, I wanted the record to reflect that Margarita is not a thief for future.
I always steal other people's, this is a, this is a, Katie, I just found this regulation. Let's borrow the language. That's the way it goes with us. Like, this is a really good regulation. So, um, yes, so, um.
I do have one.
Yeah, yeah, keep going. I love this. I love doing this.
One, my last suggestion is, please consider adding term limits for your trust fund board. Term limits are generally best practices, and it's a conversation that we've been having with, with some reticence, but I think as we're drafting new statutes, one should consider term limits.
We actually did talk about this, so let me run this by you. On the ones you appoint, total leap term limits, the overlap, you know, blah, blah, blah. If they're designated by the BET and the P and Z commission, those people have term limits anyway, because they go to you for renewal all the time. So say that I'm on the trust, which I would not be, because I've got better financial brains on P and Z than me. I, my term expires after three years. By voting to renew that commissioner, also with the BET, you're doing it with election, so by default, you're renewing it. Andrea, Andrea, Demetria, and Katie, if they leave town hall, that would be the end of their term limit. So we went through this, and the only place where we would designate term limits appropriately, we think, is with the folks that you nominate.
Yeah, I, I think that, um.
And we are gonna do, we're, we debated, we think it's a three-year term. I think that if I didn't put that language in, it should be, did I put that language in? I can't remember, but the idea was a three-year term, with one of them being three and a half the first year. We think there's a learning curve. Okay, go ahead, Jill. So does that work for you?
You know, it does say a three-year term, but it doesn't give a term limit, let's say, three terms of three years.
Oh. You think. We would have to amend it. I'm not, I'm very reticent to be the first group.
You're not, you're not. Human Services has term limits.
And I, I would just ask, only because, and we're so fortunate to have a town of volunteers and residents and neighbors. It's very, it, it's, it's much easier to revisit a board when there's a term limit than when there's not. So just ask you to consider that for the, for the legislation.
Yeah, I've talked, well, it's a long conversation.
And, and there are pros and cons on both sides. I, I'm well aware.
It's a long conversation, because I would tell you that I hit my stride on P and Z and got, and started up in the learning curve around the fourteenth year. Honestly. I don't think I became effective until, until, and I'm a slow learner, I suppose, but fourteen years in, I feel like I know enough that I can, I can be Katie's partner, and I don't think I could have done that four years ago.
Right, I, I know there are pros and cons on both sides.
Yeah, but I do, but I've also seen people who sleep through meetings and have no idea what's going on, but they probably did that when they were twenty. I don't know. I have mixed feelings. Lauren?
Yep, that's it, that's it.
Okay, I got one, I got one more thing to run by you, two things to say. Sam has, on his housing authority board, he has housing authority resident. We've picked around that people who live in affordable housing should be on this board, but it would bring us to nine people, cause you know, you can't have an even number. But we've thought that the right thing to do would be to have participation somehow from people who live in affordable housing. We would be alone in doing that. I know, maybe there's one, no, I'm sorry, Stanford also requires that. The other towns don't, that we've studied, but I, I kinda like the idea of including the user population. Does that make sense to you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it really does. And nine is a good number. We just expanded the Board of Human Services to nine. But I, I think having input of all people is a good thing, especially those that are, are living there. So I, I think, I think you can't go wrong with that. I really don't.
Okay. And if you think about the retirement board, there's people who are going to get funds in retirement that are part of that board.
Yeah, good point.
Right, right.
To users.
Sam, do you wanna add anything? By the way, Sam's testimony on Monday night at the legislature, legislature was just brilliant. He was so good.
It made all the news. It made all the news outlets.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, I saw it on Facebook.
He was so calm.
Sam was terrific. Thanks for representing us, Sam, and thanks for all you do. You taught a lot of us things in government, and I know I'll, you know, you forgot I'll never know, so thank you for what you do, Sam.
Well, that certainly wasn't.
Any thoughts?
It certainly wasn't the intent when I testified, but I, I think that Greenwich should be commended for all of its efforts. We have a tremendous amount of volunteers here in the town to give thousands and thousands of hours of dedicated service without pay. So I, I'm proud to be a member and a resident of the town of Greenwich. As to the trust fund, I think Margarita had put together a team of people that tirelessly worked for thousands of hours, and has come up with, I think, an excellent solution to a lot of our problems. And I think this housing trust fund, as you remembered, Fred, some twenty years ago or more, this came up, and it, it kinda died in the, in the RTM. But I think the way it was, has been put together, and the information, and all of the comments that have been made, and I think people are well-versed on the intent here, and I think, including the RTM in early on stages, was the right way to go, and I believe that it will sail through the RTM once the board selectmen approve this. So I'm, I'm grateful and, and pleased to see that we're moving forward into the twenty-first century with some ideas that will make Greenwich even greater than it is. So I'm proud to be part of it.
We also haven't, we've discussed another idea with Greenwich communities that we're not, we're still gonna move forward with as well, which is the concept of the town borrowing money and loaning it to the Greenwich communities. We realize that that absorbs town borrowing capacity, but it is at no cost to the town, because it recovers its borrowing cost. The advantage is that the huge process for the housing authority is obtaining, as you all know, financing. If the town is the first in ground floor financing for the housing authority, it establishes a level of credibility and enables them, and Sam and Tony Johnson have talked to us a lot about this. It was the initial, it was in the initial budget proposal that Fred put forward, and then it was deferred, and we're gonna go to June and ask again, but we're planning on asking again, because supporting the housing and supporting Greenwich communities is so essential. Amina, have I left anything important out?
Haven't, Margarita. Fantastic summation and job as always.
Oh.
The great sense of humor.
The thief, the thief she steals. So there is one little heads up I will give you. By putting in all these internal controls and building lots of supervision into the trust by the town, the idea is to make them nimble when they go to make spending decisions. So if Sam or a private developer needs three hundred thousand dollars next week, the trust doesn't have to spend six months getting approval for it. So the idea is to structure the internal controls in, so people are comfortable with the decision. So the idea is to structure the internal controls in so people are comfortable with the decisions. We may meet some resistance to that concept, but the idea, I think, has so much value for us moving for, moving the needle that we will continue to ask for it. Anything else? Sam, you still have your hand up?
Yes, yes, I, I just want to say that I want to thank the, the Board of Selectmen and, and the Planning and Zoning, the Building Department, in, in particular, Bill Maher. They have been so helpful in all of the projects that we've been doing in the past several years. With the support, what yours, with the support of the town as we have had, we couldn't have accomplished what we've accomplished. Katie's been fabulous with us and with a lot of the meetings we had. But I, I just want to thank the, the board and all of the town employees that have worked so well with us. And it makes my job a lot easier. We plan on doing a lot more and you're going to be really surprised in the upcoming years on what we have on the table. So you're going to be proud of your town.
We're proud of you. Thank you.
We're proud of you, Sam.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay, so we're good. Jenny Larkin, we'll catch you at Affordable Housing this afternoon.
Yep.
She's coming to help us. So we're doing a webpage, just a public service announcement. We're doing a webpage, why affordable housing to commute, do communication outreach. And Jenny's going to help us make it a little more zingy than what we have so far. Oh, is that a good way of putting it, Katie? It's a little nerdy. It's a little nerdy right now, to be honest. So we're trying to be less nerdy.
To be more brilliant.
Thank you, you guys, for all the questions. They were great.
Margarita, thank you. Katie, thank you. Sam, thank you. Amina, thank you. Barbara, thank you. Barbara Hines, thank you.
Barbara Hines, thank you.
And Jenny, as always, thank.
You're welcome.
Thanks, everybody. I see Noah, is there any other business or comments before we?
Adhere.
See, and none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we adjourn our regular meeting at 11:48.
Julie Landor, I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Follows in favor, Fred Camillo's, yes?
Sorry, Lauren Raven, yes. I have to go to the bathroom. I was like rushing.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Stay safe. Be well.
Bye.
Bye.